Get everyone's attention here for a moment. We're going to have a moment of silence and prayer for personal reflection. Just a moment here. Okay, we'll now call to order the meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. We have a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Our clerk for roll call, please.
Commissioner Angie.
Present.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Torello.
Present.
Commissioner Zeller.
Present.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandabosh.
Here.
Chairperson Samasco.
Present.
Move to item four. We need a motion on the addition or deletions.
Chair, can I make a motion to remove the closed session on the agenda?
Support.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Motion to approve the agenda, please.
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the deletion?
Support.
Motion to support. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried as well. Item six. Minutes of previous meetings. Motion, please.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve and file the minutes of the 9/18/25 special meeting and the 9/18/25 commission meeting and the 10/22/25 standing committee meetings.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. There are no proclamations. Item seven. Consent agenda motion, please.
At this time, I would move to approve items eight A through eight I on the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion on any of those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is carried. The nine reports of standing or special committees. I'd like to start at one end or the other. We'll start with Carrie Angie today. If you have anything to report on committees?
I have nothing to report on committees, no. Thank you.
Lisa?
Nothing this evening.
Joy?
Nothing, thank you.
Paul? How about you? Nothing from you? Are you sure?
Nothing.
Welcome, welcome to the board. Welcome to the board, by the way.
Thank you.
After I do that. Paul's first meeting tonight. He was our top pick of the sixteen people. So, Dave?
Yeah, I got a little bit. We had a advisory board of health meeting, and I'm the representative for the Board of Commissioners, so that was yesterday. It lasted three and a half hours, a lot of good information. There was a memorandum for the fluoride that was approved by the board on a five to two vote. That doesn't mean any action is going to be taken by this board for a while. It's just in support of Dr. Nevin's position on it, which he is obligated to by the state law, the MCL law, that requires the medical officer to take action one of the, one way or the other. So, the fluoride was also in Algonac, and I've got to give the Liz King and Dr. Nevin, you know, it was kind of controversial. We had, I don't know, it was over eight hours at the advisory board meeting, and also on many hours here also where we had individuals coming to address the clinic in Algonac and also Yale. Well, if we resolved the one in Algonac, they're still working on the one in Yale, but it's good that they worked together and found a solution for the Algonac clinic.
And that's about all I got. Thank you, Dave. Vandabosh? Nothing? Okay, moving on to citizens wishing to address the board. We have an issue regarding the Brockway Township. Patty Mikulakchik, please. Close. It's Irish derivation, obviously. How do you pronounce that?
Well, as you guys know, we've had a lot of stuff going on in Brockway, and most of us have left. Three board members, two deputies, and two people off planning. We just wanted the county to be aware of what was going on, what has been happening in the past and now. If there's something that can be done through by the county, you know, I think the people in Brockway would appreciate it. But again, I don't, I know this is a whole new ballpark, you know? This is something that's never happened where three board members have resigned so that there's no quorum. But hopefully, you know, we've presented enough information to you guys, so if something does come up, you're at least aware of the issue, and that can be taken into consideration when needed. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Someone from Brockway also, Cindy Potter regarding the supervisor of Brockway Township.
Can I have her minutes that she didn't fill? Hi, I'm Cindy Potter, and I am here tonight as a concerned resident and former township clerk of Brockway Township. Our township is facing a serious leadership problem under Supervisor Bill McMurtry, which has led to a significant disruption of township governance and the resignations of multiple township officials and employees. Over the past months, numerous staff and board members have resigned citing the toxic work environment under Bill McMurtry, supervisor. Some of the issues we have encountered are unprofessional or slanderous harassing conduct towards staff or board members, refusal to collaborate, and lack of open communication with the township board, history of harassing behavior with previous employees and officials, difficulty retaining or recruiting capable staff due to leadership behavior. You have copies of the resignations before you, which included a majority of the township board, planning commission, and office staff. At this point, the township does not have the board quorum to have meetings or the ability to run elections, pay bills, collect taxes, or enforce ordinances. You may ask why we cannot work with him or override him with the majority. We have tried for the last six months to move forward, but he will not allow it. He continues to slander board members on Facebook, accuses them of criminal activities, hijack board meetings with his harassment, and in effect, driven out all the good people that have recently stepped up when he drove out previous board member committees. If you try to run against him, some have tried to do that and passed, and he defames their character of the person and lies and intimidates. So, no one runs against him. We respect that township officials have autonomy, but when governance breaks down to this extent, the county has a responsibility, or at least the ability, to ensure the public administration remains responsible, accountable, and capable. We respectfully request your assistance in addressing this matter. Specifically, we ask that the county commissioner, commission considers referring the situation to the state township association, the state attorney general, or the ethics board. We believe it necessary to remove the current supervisor from his position and restore stable, transparent, and respectful leadership in our township. We appreciate your guidance and any steps you can take to help us ensure good governance for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Kayla Parrish, Public Trust and Accountability.
Good evening. My name's Kayla, and I'm speaking today as a concerned resident of St. Clair County who values transparency, professionalism, and accountability in local leadership. This board has an important responsibility to protect the well-being of our county and to serve as an example of integrity for the community it represents. When that trust is shaken, it affects not only the board, but the people who depend on it to make responsible decisions for their health and safety. There have been ongoing concerns in the community about the behavior and professionalism of certain board members who hold positions of authority in healthcare. This isn't about anyone's background or personal identity. It's about ensuring that individuals who represent public health demonstrate the same ethical standards expected of those who serve in that field. When a person with a history of disciplinary action or questionable professional conduct holds a seat on this board, it understandably creates doubt. Public confidence begins to fade when leaders who should be setting examples instead engage in arguments, disruptions, or personal conflicts during meetings. The time spent on those outbursts takes valuable attention away from the community's needs, and that hurts all of us. Serving on this board should never be about adding another title, boosting personal power, or building a resume. Leadership is about service, accountability, and humility, qualities that earn respect, not demand it. St. Clair County deserves representatives who focus on collaboration, not confrontation, on solutions, not self-interest. I respectfully ask that this board take steps to ensure that all members meet high ethical and behavioral standards, that public trust is protected, and that meetings remain focused on what truly matters, the well-being of the people you serve. Florence Nightingale believed leadership was about service, not status. I think she would be disappointed to see that standard has been forgotten. Thank you for your time and for your continued commitment to the citizens of St. Clair County.
Thank you very much. Next person, Virginia Corey regarding fluoride. Virginia Corey.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Fort Rashit. I really didn't want to come up and stand here and talk tonight. I've been to the health committee meetings, and you know what I like less than standing here and talking to you tonight? It's standing here and having to defend well-researched, established science against junk science. And there are a lot of people who've gotten up and talked at the health committee meetings, dentists, people who are professionals, who are aware of all the research that's been done. They know more than I do. But I will tell you this. This is one example of why our children don't want to stay in this county anymore. We see all good, talented, young people wanting to live somewhere else because this is no longer the blue water area, it's the backwater area. I'm really sorry it came to this. I'm so disappointed. And it's, I think it's time for the county commissioners to take a stand, not step aside, and understand that science trumps junk science. Thank you.
Thank you. John Corey, same topic, fluoridation of water.
Good evening. My name's John Corey. I'm also a resident of the county and have been for most of my life. I don't know if anything was up for action. I thought that it might have been about the fluoridation, so I did read the report from Dr. Nevy, I think it is, and so I just wanted to say that I would hope that the board will act very, very deliberately and carefully on this issue. If this is something, fluoridation of the water has been here for sixty years anyway. I remember when it came when I was a kid, and everybody got cavities, and everybody had to go get their teeth drilled out and had silver in their mouth, and all that kind of went away. And I think that everybody's accepted it. I think it's been a good thing from a public health perspective for everybody for a long time. If there are new challenges to the science underneath that, great. Everybody's open to that kind of thing, but there's hundreds of studies that show that this is fine. There is maybe one study out that shows that maybe it isn't, although they were dealing with a level of fluoridation that makes it twice what is in the, two times whatever is in the system now. So, and the report mentions one district court in Northern California who maybe made a finding that the EPA, I don't look at this more closely. Northern California doesn't govern Port here in Michigan, and even then, the judge didn't say, "You can't put fluoridation in the water." He said the EPA ought to look at it. Let the EPA look at it. Let the state of Michigan look at it. They've got all the experts. Let them look at it, and then advise us, and then the county can make a decision. But on the basis of one report, I just think that turning back sixty years of the public health success is, doesn't work for people here. There's a lot of people here who have benefited from it over the years, and before we change that, I think we ought to be very careful about it and make sure it's on a firm foundation to benefit everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Jim Frank. Jim Frank, that's who it is. Medical, Jim Frank. I couldn't read that right offhand, but it's Jim, I think it's Jim Frank. Medical advisors' report on fluoride.
That's right. My handwriting is lousy. I'd like to thank the commission for letting me speak this evening. My name's Jim Frank. I'm from Birchville Township. I attended the health advisory meeting yesterday and listened to what Dr. Nevin had to say. And I've also read through the report that he uses as the foundation for his recommendations, which is the National Toxicology Report on Fluoride and the effect that it has on the IQs of children. It's an interesting study, and certainly worthy of consideration, but Dr. Nevin glossed over some very important points. One of the very first things it says in this is association is not causation. And what we're talking about is forty, seventy different studies that were done, none of which were done in the United States, and none of which prove any causation between fluoride and lower IQ. In fact, most of the studies were done in China, forty-five out of seventy, in areas where they have high levels of naturally occurring fluoride, which could very well cause a bias in the studies that we're talking about. What do we mean by correlation or even by post hoc reasoning, which a lot of the things that he said yesterday are based on? Well, correlation might be something like this. We might notice that ice cream sales increase in Long Island in the summer, and we also notice that shark attacks occur at a higher rate during the summer. We're not going to be able to say that ice cream sales caused shark attacks. It's a correlation, not causation. When we're talking about post hoc reasoning, post hoc suggests that because I forgot to bring my umbrella today, of course it rained and I got soaked. Just because that happened after not bringing an umbrella doesn't mean that it caused it to rain. It has no bearing on the event. I guess the thing that bothered me the most yesterday, other than not representing the study in an accurate way, and suggesting that the board take actions that I would presume to be a little bit rash, the study certainly merits more attention, more study, and more testing. The thing that bothered me is he went after people who receive SNAP benefits. One of the things that he brought up was a political position about not providing sugary snacks to people who are on SNAP benefits. Less than ten percent of the residents in St. Clair County receive those benefits, and he's using those people as a way to leverage support to remove fluoride, because if they weren't eating those sugary snacks, they wouldn't need fluoride in their water. That sort of reasoning is pernicious, and it's mean-spirited, and I would expect better from the medical director of St. Clair County rather than going after poor people in our county. Thank you.
The next individual will be Courtney Potts Sanders regarding animal control from Michigan Pet Alliance.
Good evening. My name's Courtney Potts Sanders. I'm a board member for Michigan Pet Alliance. So, my question to you this evening, commissioners, is what is the county's responsibility in protecting its employees? The frenetic fervor ramping up against the county, the shelter, the shelter employees has reached life-endangering levels. Threats to personal and professional safety, intimidation tactics, defamation, libel, and slander are, are coming from a group of people who are actually proposing the animal shelter oversight committee. And what has become very apparent over the past few weeks is that the small but loud group is primarily made up of people who crave power and control over others, or who have been accused, charged with, or entangled in animal cruelty charges in the past, plus a few well-meaning residents who have been fed dishonesty and gross exaggerations. So, let's clear up the most egregious blatant untruth perpetuated by this group. The recent cruelty case involving a hundred-plus animals was not a warrantless seizure. Under the law, a warrant is not necessary when the owner relinquishes ownership, which is exactly what happened here. The evidence was already witnessed and documented, and the prosecutor chose to file the appropriate charges. Any threats or conjecture that the prosecutor or the judge will be subject to pressure or intimidation to drop the case are very concerning. The organizers and complicit followers of the smear campaign against St. Clair County, the animal shelter, and its staff are acting with malicious intent and have opened themselves up to legal action and consequences. And so, we ask, what is the county's responsibility to protect its employees? I don't believe it's by entertaining the malice and harassment currently directed at your staff. For all those listening, know this. Director Miller is a change agent, transformational leader in the world of animal welfare. She is one of thirteen professionals in the country chosen to advise Congress on animals in disaster situations. She has been deployed to disasters nationwide for fifteen-plus years to lead teams in animal rescue and recovery. Director Miller teaches others how to conduct cruelty investigations and proper evidence collection nationally. She is consistently a speaker at state, national, and international conferences. This Saturday, October eighteenth, at Michigan Humane in Detroit, there's a one-day workshop on reporting and documenting animal cruelty and neglect and advanced investigation procedures for professionals. This workshop is taught by Director Miller. Although her list of certifications and professional associations are too long to list here, she is certified fear-free professional and a dog behavior consultant. She also founded one of the most respected and professional nonprofit outreach groups in the state. And so, we ask, what responsibility does the county have to protect its employees? Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Diane Hewlett from Riley.
Hello, I'm Diane Hewlett from Riley. Since January of twenty twenty-five was when we first started talking about the issues between Ms. King and Dr. Nevin, and still appears to be no end in sight. I was certain that two bright minds could have resolved this long ago. My observation is that our health director, advisor, Ms. King, it seems that her strategy from day one was to throw as many experts at us as she possibly could with no real plan on how to solve anything, because perhaps, in my opinion, she thought that she could convince everyone that she was right. Also, I have observed that if we attack Dr. Nevin on every level, people will see that he was not right. The last several advisory meetings, it has been stated that we are only hearing one side, yet, as you know, we have sat through hours and hours and hours of testimonies from well-meaning people. That has put the advisory board in an awkward position. They are unable to get work done by bombarding with experts. Decisions do not get made, and no wonder that government hires so many people. It takes forever to get anything done. In September, however, I thought there was a glimmer of hope since she was publicly forced to get along. It appeared that she had realized that her tactics weren't working and seemed genuinely interested in finding a solution, only to find out now that she has sent an email to only a few select board, VOC members deliberately. She wants to pause the advisory board. Is that code for control of Dr. Nevin? She stated that fluoride vaccines, school-based clinics are outside of the nature of the advisory board. I feel that they are essential tactics. I don't know what she wants them to talk about. She wants to monitor what boards in the community that people are on? It's just deception. Seems to me that perhaps disciplinary action might be in order. And here's a real new problem that she didn't anticipate. It's kind of ironic. She created us. Her inaction created reaction, and she has caused us to join forces. And for that, I guess I should thank her.
Wrap it up?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next one is Carol Miller.
Good evening all. I want to clarify the record regarding an incident involving Mr. Watkins. I am the person who held the door open for him to allow him to ride with me after a board of commissioners meeting. However, once the doors closed, his demeanor changed dramatically. He became verbally aggressive and animated because I expressed support for someone that he opposes during the board of commissioners meeting we had just been at. During the board of commissioners meeting, he labeled me as a, quote, "A white woman fearing an educated black man." Even glancing at me when he said it, "Let it be known that I have friends of many races and creeds. I do not see color. I see good people. I see bad people." Based on that incident and his ongoing conduct, which is frequent shouting, attempts to dominate discussions, a general disrespect towards commissioners, other board members, and citizens alike, I do have concerns for my safety and the safety of others. His behavior, which has already warranted formal reprimand, continues to be troubling and unprofessional. Yes, many of us here still fear his unhinged behavior. On another topic, I take great issue in the Facebook posting that Diane just spoke about. Ms. King wrote that quote, "People of the board feel scrutinized for actions as minor as noting we are out of time. With community members threatening misdemeanors and fines for ABOH members, I fear these actions will deter good people from wanting to be on the ABOH and any board in the future," unquote. And then she finished, "These issues indicate a need to pause operations of the ABOH," unquote. Why is it that citizens who know the OMA cannot point out repeated and blatant issue violations? Why would a leader look to scrutinize a citizen and not bring up the violation to the board members and speak out against the violation? This is truly disheartening. I have seen an ABOH member and heard Ms. King demean Dr. Nevin many times, when he's there and when he's not there. It is getting a little bit ridiculous. What is their agenda? Maybe if Ms. King had taken and delayed the meeting as Mr. Brown had recommended to her, which he told me he did, and the OMA violations and bad behavior of the ABOH member had been put in control, we would all not be here. As stated in the email to Ms. Beeden, Ms. Hepting, and Ms. Standall to pause the ABOH, what is the C agenda that some have? Maybe the board of commissioners need to take a deeper dive into going back to how the health department was and run by one person who has only an agenda of making the health department a health department again. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for that. We have Dawn Falk.
Good evening. I would like to speak tonight about an email dated September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five from Liz King, the St. Clair County Health Officer. This email was addressed to Commissioner Lisa Beeden and Administrator Carrie Hepting. The subject of this email was the ABOH. A copy of this email was sent to me October fourteenth by a friend after seeing it on Facebook. According to this email, the ABOH is tasked with voting on issues such as fluoride vaccine exemptions and the direction of the school-based clinics. This email continues to say, "These responsibilities extend beyond the advisory nature of the board and shifts focus away from open communications and public input, instead fostering divisiveness." The advisory board of health bylaws state that the advisory board of health shall develop and recommend to the board of commissioners rules, regulations, and ordinances necessary to carry out the public health mission of the health department. It identifies, we identify and recommend priorities of public health, public health problems for community action, interpreting health department programs to the community, adopting resolutions, setting forth the position of the board on pertinent community health issues, and actively promoting and abdicating public health policies to the community. The email also mentioned conflict of interest considerations, serving in multiple capacities, e.g., township boards or political boards, can raise questions about intent and impartiality. While many pursue these positions out of public service, this email continues on, "Applications should ensure alignment with public health principles rather than self-interest." So, who gets to decide what public health principles needs to be correctly aligned to? Who gets to decide what is in self-interest? I asked Liz yesterday if to be on the board, do we all have to share the same ideology? Are we all required to think alike? from one or more but not limited to the following sectors of the county: representatives of city, village, or township government. Coincidentally, there is no mention in the bylaws about political boards. So again, I'm going, so again, going against the bylaws in my opinion. I'd be interested in hearing what Liz or Carrie's definition of a political board is. When I looked up political board, it states that this is not a standardized or political term and can refer to several different types of groups with political functions. So again, who gets to decide what is a political board? It sounds wide open to interpretation. From my understanding, this email was found with a FOIA. I find it very disturbing on many levels. It literally is a blacklist. Why would anybody who works at the county be involved in this type of activity?
Thank you. Next person, Libby Prill regarding Health Department. Libby Prill, Health Department.
So I saw the email from Liz King to Lisa Beeden and Carrie Hepting that was circulated on Facebook thanking them for sharing a communication. Now, I can't imagine what that communication was. In the interest of public transparency, I'm asking the board to voluntarily make public that shared communication as well as any responses related to this email regarding, because it is of public interest. Regarding the points in this email, I understand wanting consistency across all county boards, but all county boards do not carry the same weight and direct impact on individuals as the Health Board. I have a concern that our health director does not want an advisory board empowered to vote on making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. If an advisory board doesn't oversee an administrator's or department's activity, who decides what gets brought to the board? Our health director seems to object to posting committee member biographies but wants more information on applications for these positions. Why shouldn't the public have the same background information on the people who are making decisions for them that directly impact on their health? I don't understand this. I mean, how is a township board member more biased than a business owner or a private citizen? Our health director stated that she wants to ensure that applicants align with public health principles rather than self-interest. So my question would be, whose version of public health principles? Our health directors or Dr. Nevins? Because they're vastly different. And where is the dividing line between self and public interests when they are often the same, like advocating for clean water? If after thirty years, someone does not understand how to report conduct concerns, they simply shouldn't be in charge. Most people would have contacted HR for direction or turned it over to their supervisor, which in this case would be this board. The ABOH members didn't feel unsafe because someone noted that we are out of time. They felt unsafe because when I emailed the Board of Commissioners that passing notes violates OMA, one of the members of the ABOH involved in the note sharing responded in an email to all of us that we all saw with statements of retaliatory actions against their fellow board members. Committee members weren't threatened with fines and misdemeanors for their board work. That member was advised of the statutes for violating a request to cease and desist contact, which he promptly ignored within twenty-four hours. The only fear that the ABOH should have is of the health director's desire to pause it, maybe even eliminate it. I believe that she is trying to undermine, maybe even eliminate, the board that over--
You need to wrap it up.
Okay. So, I'm done. Okay, I'm just going to leave it at that. You guys all know, you know, what the score is on this, and I just hope that you take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kevin, you're next. You're already up and moving, so I assume it's a vote. Letter of reprimand, go ahead. Mr. Watkins.
Hello, thank you, Kevin Watkins, right on time. I'm, wear many hats, but ones that is important to know here is that I'm on the Health Advisory Board. I'm not going to comment on the reprimand because people could read my, I sent my reply to the Commissioners and made a public statement. What I want to speak on is that, are you guys afraid of me? All this nonsense about, are they just feeding into that, white people scared of black people, especially white women is afraid of black men? It's nonsense. I'm going to tell you one thing, I'm not going to run from my fellow citizens. If I see a white woman, I could run to the other side of the room because she may be afraid of me. If I'm walking in the elevator and see her, then I'm going to run back. It'd be late to my meeting because I might, I might intimidate her. She's going to be afraid of me. That's nonsense, and you all know that. I know Ms. Angie's not afraid of me. I know Ms. Beeden's not afraid of me. I know Ms. Trello, I hope, is not afraid of me as Commissioners. I don't know why Commissioner Rushing is afraid of me. That's nonsense. Let me move on for my last two minutes. This is what, I'm speaking to you, board members, Commissioners. Please understand, watch what you're seeing. What is happening now with these nonsense individuals, they're trying to do the same thing to Liz King they did to me. They're trying to set a stage of this nonsense about these emails and all this scenario so that you will reprimand her. And then when it's time for her contract to be renewed, you have an excuse, though some, maybe unfortunately, if it's four of them, would not renew a contract. It's the same, same, same old plan that they, and I think there's a Commissioner up there that's part of this, and we know who he is. There may be others, that they're trying to set her up. Look at the comparison. They're doing the same thing they did to me. The same thing, I use the word, they want to trample my constitutional rights, my First Amendment rights of speech. They know what I said, it was figuratively, there was nothing wrong with that. Everyone I talked to, they say, dude, there's nothing wrong with that. People use that all the time. To be reprimanded over that is nonsense, but I respect the fact that's what you wanted to do, and you did that, but it was wrong. But what they're doing, you got to watch out for. I'm speaking to those of common sense. There are some up there, I already know, I'm not even speaking to you because you're going to go that way anyway. But the others, you got to see what they're doing. They're trying to get Liz fired. Dr. Nevin has told them, I can't work with her. I can't work with Kevin. So what they're trying to do, they don't want to hear the opposing dissent of voice. So they're trying, they want to get rid of me, and just so you know, I'm going to reapply. So, because I feel I'm the right person to beat on that board. You have, there's some diversity on the board, you need another opposite opinion. You need pushback from Dr. Nevin because some of the things he's doing is wrong. But if you don't choose me, you won't, but you won't say Kevin didn't apply, I'm going to apply. Watch what they're doing, they're doing, watch it, they're doing the same thing to her that they did to me. They want her gone because Dr. Nevin wants her gone. Please be careful.
Same topic, Bobby Jones Jr.
So I'm actually here not knowing that Mr. Watkins was going to make it or not, and on behalf of a dear friend who asked me to read the letter, and I'm not going to read it in its entirety, but I am going to read a portion of it. "To the citizens of Saint Clair County and the broader community, in recent days, a letter of public reprimand has been issued concerning comments I made during a Saint Clair County Health Advisory Board meeting on September 17th, 2025. I wish to take this moment not only to respond but to reflect as a citizen, as a leader, and as a man devoted to the pursuit of justice and truth. I have served this community with a heart that burns for fairness and equality. My words that evening while impassioned were not born of anger but of urgency. The urgency to confront systems and silences that have too often failed the people who depend on us the most. Yet I understand that in public service, intent does not always raise impact. Words carry power, and when spoken from a place of influence, they must be wielded carefully. My choice of a word was never meant as a threat or as an act of aggression, it was a metaphor for what happens when voices, ideals, and individuals are quietly erased, silenced, or dismissed in the public process. I still recognize that even metaphors, when taken out of their full intent, can wound or divide. For that, I take responsibility." The next word is a "but," and "but" usually gets us into trouble. That's not why I'm stopping there. I'm stopping there because those words that Mr. Watkins said up until that point touched me. I did read the rest of it. I don't believe the rest of it will fit in my timeframe. My prayer this morning, or this today, is that we can put stuff behind us and get back to the business that we need to do. This is probably the third county Commissioners meeting that I've been in my life, and I am encouraged and discouraged at the same time. I'm encouraged by the passion that individuals show here. I'm discouraged on the ticky tack bickering things that go on, and I apologize if that insults anyone, that's not my intent. My intent is to say that this, that all of the boards have a job to do, and we're wasting time on this other stuff, and I would love to see us get back to doing what we were positioned to do.
Thank you very much. That concludes, that concludes Item 10. We'll move on now to the next page, Item 11, Unfinished Business, hearing none. New business, Item 12, we need a motion on Item A.
This time I move to approve the September 2025 county disbursements in the amount of $45,243,208.87.
Motion in support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item 12B, motion?
This time I make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-25, apportioning taxes for 2025.
Support.
Motion in support, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. 12C, please, motion?
At this time I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Agreement in the amount of $249,912.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item E, please, motion?
This time I make a motion to approve the contract with the Library Network for the provision of daily intra-library material delivery in the amount of $67,104 for a term of October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item 12F, please.
I believe it's 12E.
12E, yep, 12E, please.
This time I move to renew the annual memorandum of agreement, MOA with MSU extension for the fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $106,884.
Support.
Motion in support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
12F, please.
At this time I make a motion to reappoint Mr. Byron Haisley to the Department of Human Services Board as the Board of Commissioner appointment for a three-year term expiring 10/31/2028.
Second.
Motion is second, a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item G.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025 Michigan Public Safety Communications System Member Subscriber Agreement.
Support.
Motion in support, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Item H, please.
At this time I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-26, authorizing the Capital Improvement Fund for the 72nd District Court.
Second.
Motion in second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 12H carries. Aye, please.
At this time I've moved to approve the 2025-2026 Child Care Fund budget in the amount of $7,993,336.98.
Support.
Motion in support, discussion, roll call.
Can I ask some questions?
Go ahead, sure.
Carrie, I noticed in our, in our agenda packet, there was one page that covers this $8 million item that we're voting on today. Are there any other documents that we can look at?
Yes, there is, there should be a backup document that goes with it. I did reach out to the court administrator today, and he did try to log into the state system. Unfortunately, the state system was down today, so he was not able to get that over to me. But as soon as we get that, I will send that over.
Is there any kind of urgency to us approving this today? Is it possible that we could table this until we receive documents to review, aside from one page for this $8 million item?
So any delays in getting this back to the state will delay any payments or reimbursements to the county for our child care fund.
I had a question. Is the amount of the child care fund budget, that is fairly consistent with the previous budget's amounts, Carrie?
Yes, it's a little bit increased because of the opening of the juvenile detention, but all the other programs are consistent.
We have motion, second, and discussion, no further motions, roll call.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item J, please, motion?
Make a motion to approve the contract with Peterson Research Consultants for Juvenile Court in the amount of $21,500.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Motion on K, please.
This time I move to approve the purchase of RFID scanners and equipment from BizStream Inc. in the amount of $20,169 for the Juvenile Intervention Union.
Support.
Motion in support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item L, motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 2025 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement in the amount of $97,050 in federal funding.
Support.
Motion in support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item M, motion, please.
Oh, sorry. At this time I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Danny's Transport for Landfield Materials in the not-to-exceed amount of $52,880 for the period of December 1/25 through November 30th of 2026.
Support.
Motion in support, thank you, Dave. Any discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item N, motion?
This time I move to appoint Paul Zeller, Commissioner, to the Materials Management Planning Committee for the remainder of a five-year term expiring 12/31/2029. Hopefully, this is unanimous.
Support.
Motion in support, I'll just note, any discussion or comment?
I have a comment. Don't miss a board meeting.
Ding ding. Well, that's not an objection, so we will proceed with a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Motion carries. Item, oh, please. Item, oh, please.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors, John Steffi, District Seven, Representative for a three-year term expiring October 31st, 2028.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item P.
At this time, I make a motion to approve the agreement with Asphalt Trucks Incorporated for landfill materials in the not-to-exceed amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the period of 12/1/25 through 11/30/26.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item Q, motion?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with MDMA for the landfill materials not to exceed the amount of one-hundred-and-ten thousand for a period of December 1st, 2025 through November 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item R, please, motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with S.A. Trello for landfill materials in the not-to-exceed amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, four-hundred dollars for the period of 12/1/25 through 11/30/26.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to abstain from this vote.
You're going to abstain? Yep, that's understandable. No objection. Uh, we'll all do a roll call vote excluding Commissioner Trello, who's abstaining.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Chairperson Smasko?
Yes.
Item 12S, motion, please.
At this time, I move to approve the landfill rate adjustment as presented.
Support.
Support.
Have motion in support, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, I wanted to make a motion to table that for at least thirty days to ask some more questions on that before we just make a decision on raising the rates for everybody.
Okay. Is there a second on the request to, well, is there any further discussion on, on the motion or the secondary motion about the landfill rates? Anyone have any comments?
Well, on the initial motion, of course, if my memory is correct, it's roughly a million and a half dollars then in the negative that the landfill is currently doing. These adjustments, what Carrie Hefting got together and presented us with, will make that where we're revenue neutral, so the money collected will cover the cost of running the landfill. And if we table this a month, and I do the math, it's roughly a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars a month. If we table this before we get the information to the townships and municipalities, this will hamper them getting their contracts in line with whoever their providers are. Wales Township, I believe, just it's by the household, so that's going to be fairly easy. In Riley Township, they have a special assessment that's issued, and many townships do that. So, I think it's something that, we could table it, but I think we're just going to be avoiding the inevitable. We can always readjust if we come up with other revenues.
I guess, any other questions or comments on the issue of the main motion or the secondary motion? I had, I guess, a question, Carrie, um, you know, given what's occurred at the landfill in the last couple of years, and the revenue streams have changed, and some of the enforcement issues and costs associated with that, so we now have to look at the budget for the landfill. And I understand there's, it's operating at a deficiency in this rate increase. I, I looked at the rate increase that was suggested. If we, if we wait on the rate increase for thirty days, will that imperil county finances to any large degree, other than just missing out on that, that amount perhaps, or?
Well, we do need to know what the board's intention is as we develop the general fund budget, because right now, the general fund is making up that two to two-and-a-half million-dollar shortfall with an appropriation. So, in order for us to present a general fund budget to you next month, we need to know if we need to add that appropriation to the landfill, or if, um, or if not.
So, if we, let's say we decided to implement the requested increase schedule, we could always revise that later, right? We could look at that in November, or December, or January, and say, after we've had the consultant involved, because I know that's what?
Yeah, I was, I was hoping that we'd get a little bit more of discussion through the peer review as to what they think, and then?
And that's something that Joy had called me about. He says, well, why wouldn't we wait until involve this consultant, we're going to have overview of the landfill? It made sense to do that. But I guess my question is, if we proceeded with the rate increase now, so you could do your budget, and the townships could maybe perhaps get ready for a rate increase, if we decided later, given some recommendations from this consultant to either raise it or lower, we can, it's not carved in stone, right? We could, we could move those rates November, December, January, we could make an adjustment. Would that be correct?
Um, this board can adjust those rates at any time. There could potentially be an, an impact to the general fund if, if you lower the rates and we don't have another revenue source or inability to reduce expenditures.
It looks like to me that the increase is necessary and appropriate at some reasonable level. I'm assuming what, what was presented, if Dave is correct, it's like a break-even type of a approach. I'm going to assume that to be true. Then I would suggest that we pass it now, rather than adjourn it for thirty days, but then look at that, to, to say, if we need to adjust it. That way, the townships could get ready, and the budget for October would be ready. And then, whatever we're going to do ultimately with the benefit of the consultant, we could do that November, December, January, whenever that would come in. And I guess another question that Carrie is, what's the likely turnaround of something like that? Where are we at with that consultant piece for landfill?
Our kickoff meeting with the consultant is next Wednesday, so they will be starting their review, so it'll be about four or five months for them to complete the process. So, it'll be first, second quarter next year before you receive a report.
And this landfill rate increase, I should probably ask Dave, he's pretty good with math off the top of his head, what's the percentage? There's all these different things, what's the percentage, generally speaking?
Um, going from figures?
Or maybe, maybe Carrie knows, I don't know.
Twenty-five percent increase, wasn't it?
Um, it, it's different on each item, but?
Generally speaking, it's, it's twenty, twenty-five percent increase across the board.
Yeah, it, it is pretty significant.
And we did in twenty, I think it's in your cover letter, that given the move we made to, to stop the Canadian trash at the landfill, that was over a million-dollar hit, some of the regulatory costs involved with the landfill consent order, and some of those things, it's just, it's just where we're at. We stopped the septic injection, there were revenues lost from that as well. And then, I guess, I think your memo pointed out, there were other unexpected revenue declines, that this would also account for that as well.
Uh, yes, we currently, our volume dropped another twenty-seven percent this year, in addition to the loss of the Canadian volume, and we're not sure why, other than we are not seeing any special projects, that we normally see one or two a year, or several. We haven't seen any of those this year. So, certainly, if we get some of those in the future, that will help. This rate increase gets us at the low end of where we are with our deficit, because it's trending between two-and-a-half and three million right now, and this raises two-point-one million.
Then, kind of like, maybe a tickler approach to the process, let's say we didn't adjourn it, we implemented that landfill increase projections as presented, would we, if we put it on every month, it's old business, could we just look at that every month as we go forward, to see if we want to do something? Would that be something we could do, or?
If, if that's what you'd like, I don't know that we will have any new information necessarily for you, if we're, if you're waiting for the peer review. So, perhaps we could put something to have it reviewed once the peer review is done.
How do you feel about that, Joy? Does that, think that would satisfy your concern for more information? My concern is, we, we will be needing to do something. Townships are affected by this, the October budget's affected by this, but I also sensitive to what you're saying. Let's look at what the consultants say, so you think that would satisfy that part of it, or you think, just, what's your thoughts on that? I think, what's your thoughts on that proposal?
No, that'll be fine.
Then, what I'll do is, one of two things, we have a subsidiary motion, I can, I can call the vote on the subsidiary motion to table it. We had a motion as second, or you can withdraw the subsidiary motion and proceed to the main motion. Whichever you'd like, it's your motion. I'm saying?
So, can I just ask a couple of questions, just to be clear? What you're saying is, if we voted to table it and waited for the peer review, that would take four or five months down the road.
Yes.
Um, which is going to be going on whether we approve these increases or not. And if we approve the increases, then later at the peer review, decide that we want to do something different, there's nothing to stop us from changing. Um, the rate increase is consistent with our new decision four or five months down the road. Is that right?
That's correct. Or if, if the board does not want to take any action this evening, we just need to know that, so we can accurately reflect that in the budget we present to you next month.
And if it's not approved, then you're going to have to pull all this money out of the, uh, the general fund budget to cover the deficit that's ongoing. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Joy, what's your, Joy, what's your opinion?
Carrie, what's your recommendation, is your, your controlling background, you think we should prove it now and, and maybe adjust it later, or wait? What's your general thoughts?
Um, unfortunately, given our decrease in volume and the significant increase in costs, just due to the operations and bidding out that contract and bringing that in-house, that was also a large cost increase over what we were currently paying, the additional costs from the consent agreement. I, I don't believe that this, um, this deficit is an anomaly. I think it's going to be ongoing, so we are going to have to address it in some fashion, whether the board is comfortable with appropriating from the general fund and backfilling that, but it's not going to be a one-year fix. It's something that would have to happen forever without a rate adjustment.
And it relates to, I think, you were talking about the contract with Talaski, where they had a contract, they no longer wanted to bid that work, so then we put it out, and the bids were substantially higher, millions of dollars higher.
Yes.
So, then we brought it internal, which was over what we paid Talaski.
Yes.
And that was an additional drag on production or cost to the county and all that. So, um, from a county standpoint, I mean, it sounds like you're saying that it's, the delay would not be to the benefit of the county, we should improve our position on that if we can at this time. Is that fair?
Uh, yes, that's fair.
All right, so?
Steve? I got three or four things. One, we did eliminate the Canadian trash, which you already brought up, so that lost a million-plus. Uh, the normal household, getting this from Matt Williams, is roughly a ton and a half per household. And if you look at the rates that we're looking at, we're still not going to be the highest in the state, we're a closed county, and we need to take care of the residents of this, and it's something that has to be addressed. In regards to the budget, we have to get our budget in line, which Carrie's going to be doing for, presented to us in November, but the cities and villages and all charter township, basically, there's exceptions, but mostly, they start their fiscal year January 1st. The general law townships start theirs on April 1st. The sooner we get this information to them, the sooner they can adjust their budgets as needed, and get the special assessments where needed also, like Riley Township will have to get a special assessment increase for them. And the sooner they get that information, the better it is for them. Riley Township's going to be addressing theirs on November 11th, so they're going to be looking for the monies that they're going to need to collect for Riley. And if we get this information to the twenty-three townships, and of course, I think there's seven charter townships, that the sooner you get them the information, it assists them in doing their budgets also.
All right, well, any further discussion? I guess at this point, I've not heard any request to withdraw the secondary motion, so we'll, we'll call, go ahead.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman, if I may, um, we do want, would need to know what you would like the effective date of this increase to be. Historically, you've set it a couple months out to give adequate notice. Sometimes, it's been as much as six months advance to municipalities of the, the notice of the rate change. So, if, if you could let us know when you would want it.
Past practice has been sixty to ninety days. Is that what you're saying?
Um, no, it, it's been actually months, or, you know, up to six months.
I think January 1st would be beneficial to all the municipalities, the thirty-one that we have in the county, to get them that information, so whether it's City of Port here and City of Marysville, they can get those adjustments to their budget prior to. If we do it February or March, now they're going to have to do potentially what we would do, readjust their budget, take money out of their general fund, rather than get the special assessment and raise rates. The sooner you give them the information, the sooner the Board of Trustees for the twenty-three townships and the other eight municipalities, it gives them the opportunity to, for them to address it.
So, it's, uh, you, are you comfortable with that, Carrie, from an administrator standpoint, a January 1st start date, is that?
That's right.
Okay, there's been a suggestion that the motion include a start date, we'll get to that as a subsidiary motion, but first, on, on whether or not we're going to adjourn it, we'll call the vote, um, you know, I'll call a vote, just a voice vote, all in favor of adjourning thirty days, yes, no, we'll clear that first, so all in favor of? Was there support, go for it? Oh, no support on?
I don't believe that there was.
Well, then, that fails for lack of support. We'll move on to the others. And Dave, you're making a motion that the effective date be January 1st, 2026.
Correct. Yes.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion on that? Motion and support. Any discussion on that? So the secondary motion to amend the main motion with a start date of January 1st. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so there's that. Now, the motion, the main motion's been amended to include a start date, so the implementation of the schedule of landfill fees as presented with a start date of January 1st, we'll modify that motion thusly, and we'll do a... Just a voice, no, we need a roll call or a voice vote on that? Why don't you do a voice vote? Just do a voice vote.
This is what, for January 1st?
Start date, January 1st, 2026, on the schedule as presented on the initial motion. Our parliamentarian's not here, so I'm looking at you.
Oh. You're going to do the voice vote, right?
No, we're going to roll call.
Roll call?
Roll call, yeah.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
No.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
No.
Chairperson Semasko?
Yes. Okay. What do I got here? Item T, motion, please.
That is me. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Fiddler Technologies for the purchase of a new vital records software program in the amount of $120,000 over a five-year term and the associated web hosting agreement.
Support.
Thank you.
Motion and support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairperson Semasko?
Yes. Item U, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for... I've got a lot of dashes on empty spots on this.
Do the best you can, Dave.
To appoint some person, and then point another person for the Board of Canvassers for a four-year term.
How about we proceed to a vote on that?
Sure. It doesn't say that.
I know it doesn't, but that's what we're going to do. The clerk knows all about that. So that's a process here, is to do the Board of Canvassers appointment with the ballot. Ballots are marked with the commissioners' names on them. We'll submit one vote as to each partisan from each party, as promoted by the party. The Democrat Party gave the names Fred Fuller, Ruth Haveluski. Republican Party put in Michael Grover and Paul Kitzman. We'll vote for one in each category until we have a majority on the vote. So... Want to go ahead and start? We're started already. Okay.
Majority vote goes to Fred Fuller for the Democrat Party, and Paul Kitzman for the Republican Party.
Good, for one round. Thank you. Next item we'll move on to is item V. Please motion?
I motion to approve the Addendum B to the Cutting Edge Lawn and Snow Contract, extending the term for the 2025 to 26 winter season.
Support.
Motion and support. All in favor? Or discussion first? We'll get that out of the way. No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? V carries. Item W.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-24, imposing the 2025 December property tax levy.
Support.
Motion and support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item X, please.
At this time, I move to approve the agreement for assessing services with Port Huron Township for a term of 11/1/2025 to 4/30/2030 in the amount of $644,267.
Support.
Motion and support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Chairperson Semasko?
Yes. Item Y, please. Motion?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
At this time, I'd move to approve the 2023 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program award in the amount of $220,000 for a term of 8/29/25 through 8/31/27.
Support.
Motion and support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
Yes.
Chairperson Semasko?
Yes. Z, motion, please.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve Addendum 1 Full Time Appraiser 3, Assessor Position to the Equalization Manning Table upon the approval of the Port Huron Assessing Services Agreement.
Support.
Motion and support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item Z carries. Item A, A, please. Motion?
At this time, I'd move to appoint blank to the Kimball Township Landfill Impact Fee Trust Fund Board.
Support.
Well, Mr. Blank has it. Now, how do we do that one?
So we received a notice from Kimball Township that they were increasing their host community fee from 10 cents to 30 cents at the landfill. And as part of that, they are putting those funds into a trust. The public act requires that that trust is overseen by a board, and the Board of Commissioners appoints one member to that board. So the requirement is a resident that lives in Kimball Township will be, needs to be appointed by this board. I suggest that we perhaps put out a notice, allow interested individuals to apply, and then in November, we can bring back some applicants to you of those interested in applying and sitting on that trust fund board.
So if we get a motion to table this subject to public notice, table it how far out?
Um...
30, 60?
I think 30 days would be good, so we could put it on your December agenda.
We have a motion to table this for 30 days, please?
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, opposite, whatever you want to do.
Lisa, you're it. You did it. We have a motion, a second, to table now. To table this consistent with the administrator's recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matters table. Thank you. Next item, Administrator's Report.
One item that is not reflected on the report is our old health department building. We are at a place where we are ready to sell the building. I've received several inquiries from interested parties that are interested in purchasing or acquiring the building. So we do have two options. We could use the services of a realtor and list the building for sale, or we could do an RFP process, which is what I recommend, that we've done with some of our other vacant buildings. Individuals would be able to submit a proposal to you with a proposed price, and then let you know what their plans are for the site. And then you could select what you feel is the best use and vote on that.
And the timeframe to do an RFP, what are you looking at? What would you need?
We could probably get something drafted and out within the next 30 days, and then the RFP would be posted for a period. So this probably would not come back to you until January, would be my guess.
So you need a motion on that, or just the consensus of the board generally, based on discussion?
Just a consensus, if you would prefer that we enlist a realtor, or if we use an RFP process.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So if we did it with the RFP process, and an individual was interested in the building, is there, what's the procedure for them being able to see the building before they decide whether to put forward a bid?
So as part of the RFP, we would schedule a time for a walkthrough, where interested parties could come and do a walkthrough of the building.
And would there be an inspection and inspection reports available to people who might want to come forward?
There was an assessment done on that building prior to the health department moving to this building. There was a whole needs assessment done, and that included an evaluation of the current building.
So those documents, I'm just thinking, if there's not a realtor, then how would potential buyers be able to get the information they would if there were a realtor involved?
Right. So that report is a public document, so that could be posted with the RFP, so they would have that information that they could review. And it lists the conditions of the building, any problems with the building, things that require repairs, improvement. And then they would also be able to have a visual walkthrough of the building as well.
Thank you.
Your RFP would contain all the descriptions and areas and all that, diagrams and whatnot?
Yes, we could include that full report and all of the information. We have used this process, the RFP process, on several other buildings, and it's worked quite well.
Give us an example, Kerry, of some of the buildings that have been moved that way, and the purposes they were put to.
We had a excess building that the drain commissioner sold, and it was sold to a repurposed for a business, purchased it. And the board used it when they disposed of the art vamp building next door as well. Individuals were able to submit proposals on how they were going to repurpose the building and what they were going to do with it.
So we might be able to consider if it's a public purpose versus a private purpose and so forth?
Yes, you would, instead of just selling it, you would see what would be done with the building. And then you could, that could play into your decision on what proposal you selected.
Any idea what the monthly cost is to maintain that? You've got the winter coming. Is that a high...
So we will be turning the utilities down to a level that's, you know, safe without causing any damage. So we haven't had it in a vacant status, so I'm not sure what that's going to look like. But we'll do what we can to preserve those costs or reduce those costs as much as possible.
I'm good with an RFP. Anybody, you feel everybody okay? It's nods all around, so go ahead. That's good. We're done. All right. Anything else on your report?
Not unless there's any questions on it.
Next item, miscellaneous business. Dave, go ahead.
I have two things. One, of course, our county administrator is retiring January 1st. And what I would like to do is have it on the committee for next month, that Tom Hall be put on the committee and have a six-month interim, and also maybe some wording in there to make sure that he can retain his previous positions, very similar to what we did for Bill Kaufman. So I want that on there, so there's continuity in who currently works upstairs, and so we can continue business pretty smoothly. And Kerry Hefting speaks very highly of him, and my understanding, I would like to see Tom Hall get that consideration. So I do want it on the committee. We can have much further discussion in, on the committee.
Would that go on as a conceptual initiative or an action item, Kerry?
I would put it on as new business for you, or I could put it on wherever you would like it.
New business is fine. That's fine.
New business, that'll be an action item, then. So I'd rather have a new business.
Is that a ways and means matter, you think? Or, okay. You okay with that, Kerry?
Just...
Absolutely.
Okay.
One other note, Steve. Just back to the landfill. By doing this, what we approved, it's going to greatly assist the general fund that we have. If we have to take other funds from our general fund to cover the deficit of our landfill, there's going to be things that are going to be, that we're not going to be able to use that money for, that we could have used it for. So I think this is another good decision that we made to get this going forward.
You're patting yourself on the back, Smack. All right. Anybody else with miscellaneous business? I just want to mention Brockway Township. I've been on this board a long time, and for the first time in about two or three decades that I've been around, I've never seen where we had, you know, a majority of a township board resign. So I know Corporation Council looked at it, and just so some folks here wanted us to make sure we took some appropriate action. But the process for that, as I'm told by Corporation Council, was that, and we've already, I know it was sent out by our administrator, we solicited, I guess it was not for the Election Commission, Kerry? Is that how that worked?
Yes, the Election Commission will appoint an individual, so they can have a quorum to appoint the other members.
They have to have the quorum to accept the resignations, to then move to appoint subject to, like, the processes we did. So that's all in place. I just wanted to make a note of that, that the county's taken that particular part of it, got it done rather quickly. So anybody else with miscellaneous business? Hearing none. You have a motion on 15, receive and file?
Make motion to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets that were at their place, at places, and any other information presented.
Second.
Motion and support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 16 is gone. We've moved that 18, or 17. Motion, please?
Motion to adjourn. Support.
Motion and support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
To adjourn.